Good evening. I want to welcome you to our regular scheduled Akron Public School Board meeting. Thank you for your attendance. At this time, we'll have roll call. Mr. Alexander, frozen. Mrs. Baylor.
Here.
Mr. Bravo.
Here.
Mrs. Lasher.
Here.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Reverend Walker.
Present.
And from Kenmore Garfield, Student Board Representative Chandler Forshy.
Here.
Welcome. At this time, he will lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag, now we United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I throw my chair right back.
You did. No, not at all. Thank you for being so grateful. You were doing good and you felt a little reckless.
Yeah, I guess. I just wait till I hold backwards.
We've quite a bit that we want to move forward and share today. So we'll have our community reflections, and before the board members give theirs, we have special presentation that we want to make as superintendent role.
Sure. Item five on the consent agenda has to do with a grant from the Martha Holding Jennings Foundation. So today with us, I have Dan Keenan, who's the Executive Director of the Jennings Foundation, and their Board Chair Ann Justin, who are here to talk a little bit about the grant. And I'll also turn it over to our Instructional Policy Committee with Lisa Mansfield to give a short introduction.
Mrs. Baylor and I would like to particularly on behalf of the Instructional Policy Committee, but also on behalf of the entire Board, thank the foundation for their multi-year commitment to our college and career academy transformation. We've talked a lot in the last couple of years about our high school academies and the incredible support of the G A R Foundation and a lot of academy business partners. Our elementaries have started transforming through our family resource centers supported by United Way and Key Bank, and through essential experiences supported by the G A R for students to have field studies and cultural historical locations throughout our community, those field trips we've talked about for everyone. Our middle grades did not yet have a partner for their transformation to get students prepared for the incredible opportunities at the high school level. The Martha Holding Jennings Foundation was the perfect partner to join our academy work. They believed in excellent teaching focused on principles shared with APS such as motivating students and tapping into their creativity, leading them in academy discovery, managing the classroom well, and connecting concepts with students' personal experiences. We want to thank Dr. Dan Keenan for his leadership and for the long history of partnering with our district, but we want to express a deep appreciation for the foundation's vision, taking our partnership to a whole new level.
Dr. Keenan?
Thank you. It's a pleasure being here first before I, I'd like to tell you a little bit about why we felt that you guys were the perfect partner for us as well, but I want to say that life is mutual.
If you would like to come up for a podium.
Oh. The two of you.
Thank you.
I'm going to let our President and Board Chair at least start because this is really a different way of partnering for the foundation. We've been around since 1959, and I'm going to mention a little bit about that, but this is a new, new type of partnership for us, so I'm going to let our Board Chair present on this.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for having us here this afternoon. We're delighted to return the visit to Akron. We had your superintendent and some stellar teachers come to our board meeting last night, so it seemed to be balanced. As Dan mentioned, the Martha Holding Jennings Foundation has been in existence since 1959. We're a foundation that serves K through 12 education throughout the entire state of Ohio, which is unique, and our themes are excellent teaching and deep learning, which Akron could is our poster child, literally, the portrait of a graduate is so exciting. So in 2017, we started a strategic plan for the foundation, and one of the things that came out of it was how do we measure impact? And that's when the board decided to carve out some monies to be given to two pilots, and Akron is one of them. So now, working with you for five years and having the money set aside, you know, there'll be some, and we want to make sure that things are going the way they should, and we have no doubt that they will, but we'll be able to learn from you as, as well as support you in your learning endeavors. So we're delighted, and I think this is an example of how we are working together. So, thank you.
So that being, thanks and thank you, Anna. That being said, the board said to me, hey, Dan, you know, our typical grant's been $15,000, but we really want to do something bigger. And it really wasn't about dollar amount, it was really about find some partners that are committed to going deep and doing things the right way. And so they wanted me to, to go across the state and find the right partners that can oppose what they're, they're doing for us. And first thing I did was contact those that we know had a great history of doing things right, and talk to many partners, because as you know, across Ohio, we have many great partners, and you included, but there, there are, you know, hundreds of great partners. We have about 140 grants a year, but the difference between a $15,000 typical grant, a half a million dollar grant, which this one is, was, was pretty big, and so we wanted to make sure we best a lot of time. And here, here's what I want to tell you about why we're all so thrilled about this, because our mission's the same, you know, we care about what kids are becoming, not just what they're learning. And that's crystal clear from everything you do, from when you talk to David here, when you talk to Ellen or Rachel, or when you talk to your teachers, you have so many teachers that write individual grants, and I know they work with your grant people, there's just a connectedness here that I know you all have worked on as a board from talking to your leadership, but it's more than that, it's your entire community. So the fact that you're worried about what kids are becoming and not just what they're learning was, was huge for us. The second thing is the thoroughness that you have all have here in Akron. I mean, David's a continuing learner himself, he comes to every one of our retreats each year, so that he makes sure that he is, is looking through the lens of Akron, but understanding how things are going in different contexts. He always participates elements in our leadership series, like I mentioned before, with different teachers working. We know when you do grants, that you do them right, you don't just chase dollars. You're never, you're never looking for just the dollars, you're looking for does this match? And that's huge. And when we talk to all of your staff, it was always, you know, how can we support our teachers more thoroughly? How can we include our community partners? But it was always around the same thing, what can this do for our students in that portrait of a graduate? So the thoroughness was there. Then the last thing I just want to note too is the partnerships. You guys know how to partner right, the right way. You understand what it means to connect with the groups that you're doing for a common goal, and it's crystal clear, again, all three of those things, the common goal is right there, what your students are becoming, but you, you take the unique strengths from who you're partnering with, and you leverage them for the best of your students. You know, having Chandler here is another example of, you know, seeing things in action. Your documentation's great, but, you know, when we walked in, first thing in, I noticed was that he was part of that. So it just reinforced with us that it's going to be a great partnership, and we're grateful as well. So thank you very much.
Any questions or comments that you want to hear?
Just thank you.
Yeah, just thank you.
You're welcome.
Forward to work. Thank you for the partnership, and thank you for being here. And Madam President, thank you for your presence as well. Thank you so very much. This time, we'll take brief community reflections, if there are any this evening.
Ten.
We have a nice presentation that will happen in a few minutes.
Yes, sir. I'll start around this way this time. That way, there's no time left. Many of us attended the NSBA conference in Philadelphia, so I won't spend a lot of time talking about that one. Attended some, some very good sessions, enjoyed a couple of the general, the general sessions. In particular, the CEO from SHRM really enjoyed his session, talking about employees and hiring and things like that, and I thought that was really top notch. Attended some on equity, trauma-informed perspective of educational environments, which was interesting then, and sort of dovetails into the state of the county's health. Sort of talking about the state of the county's health, went to that as well, and pulled out a lot of interesting statistics from the youth behavior risk survey that they were presenting in partnership with the ADM Board that they're now doing, I think every five years, and hopefully will continue to do that at least every five years. But a great report, but it talked about the social determinants of, of health making up about 50% of the whole person, and that we have, out of the 68,000 people in our community that we have in poverty, about 18% of those are children, and 60% of adults report experiencing trauma when they're children, which you can imagine that that statistic is probably not only likely still relevant or will be relevant, you know, 10 or 15 years from now when our children are, are taking that survey maybe as an adult, but that, that makes them 15, 15 times more likely to attempt suicide, 4%, 4 times more likely to be alcoholic, 4 times more likely to contract STDs, 4 times more likely to inject drugs. Substance abuse was down, vaping was up, and, and so on. But it was just really interesting to hear all of that and then take it back to, you know, what you hear at the conference from around the country, school districts dealing not only with their kids with trauma, but of course, what their adults are bringing to the building as well, their teachers, their educators, the principals, even those of us on the board, so what we all bring in terms of how that, how that, how that goes into what we do. Had our student board presentation for our student board representatives, and that was really good. Mr. Alexander and I attended that, they had a presentation from Deb Folk on business affairs, and I think it, I think it surprised them, I think they were surprised at what goes into business affairs for Akron Public Schools. I think they were surprised at what a bus cost is to purchase. But really good discussion, and Miss Field, as always, does a stellar job on leading the discussion, and we had a, a nice leadership piece at the beginning to, to talk with the kids about what it means not only to be in leadership, but to be in leadership as part of a group, and so that was really good, and I'm supposed to be brief, so.
Well, Patrick stole all my thunder, so I don't have a lot, no, but it was very, always very rewarding to be able to participate with our students, and we, I enjoyed that event as well, coming here to meet with the students and talk about leadership, but also just to hear them and be able to talk, and I wish I could have stayed and, and engaged a little bit more, but we had to, of course, we all have jobs, and we had to get back to work, but it was very, very nice engaging with them. And again, like Patrick said, we all went to the National School Board Conference, and there were a lot of sessions, and I'm not going to bore you guys with a lot, but there were a couple that kind of stood out, and one, when I walked in, they started talking about us through Crayola, and I thought of Mrs. Mansfield, because it talked about arts in education, how the entwined art and the impact that the, and the engagement they have with the arts and students, and so a lot of time, we say it's extracurricular activity, and I said I'm going to change that word and say it's co-curricular, because it's co, it goes with the curriculum, not just something extra, but it, it entwines with the curriculum. And they did a good job of, the panels from various school districts came and talked about what they're doing, some innovative things that they were doing as far as the arts in education. Also, there was another session, I'm not going to go through all of them, Mr. Bravo also mentioned about trauma, and it was a session on impact of trauma, and the impact of trauma had on African-American students, and some of the trauma that they go through, they talked about the neighborhoods sometimes, that they, the trauma they go through sometimes, the violence that may go on in the home or maybe in the neighborhood, or just the things that they may encounter, you know. Nowadays, we've read a lot, with a lot of violence that's going on in our community, and it's very sad, but these are young people, and these young people going through some very tragic times at a young age, and can you imagine some of us when we go through some of these traumatic problems, issues at our age, how we have to deal with it, but these are young people, and so that was very interesting, what they were talking about there, and I'm just going to end with one other thing. I was part of a panel discussion that was really good, it talked about trauma and mental health, and there was a young lady by the name of Joyce Wilkerson, she's the Chair of the School Reform Commission of Progress and Barriers to Student Achievement at the Philadelphia School District, and there was a Dr. Bayott, who was the professor at, in early childhood education at DePaul University, and I kind of felt like, wow, I don't need to be up here with these two individuals, because they were very bright, very, but it was, it was fun, and we had a lot of, a lot of engagement, a lot of questions, a lot of talk, and I thought it was very, 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 very nice. So it's always so much, I kind of, this is the first time that I've gone to a national school board conference, and I kind of got overwhelmed, because there was so much that was going on, and so much that I wanted to see that I couldn't see, and I couldn't grasp hold of, but it was kind of overwhelming, but it, all in all, was very, very good, so I want to, oh, I'm sorry, I lied, I don't want to end with that, I want to end with one other event that I went to yesterday, and Mrs. Baylor was there as well, and this is a, a young lady who was an Akron Public School student who passed about a month ago, and this young lady, very, I knew her personally, because she, when she grew up and she was going through the schools, but she did a lot in a short time. She went to the military, she was in the Army, she got her pilot's license, she just did so much, she was a beautiful young lady, and it was just sad to hear and to talk about all the things that she's done, but how at such a young age, she could have just evolved even more to do more for not just the city of Akron, but the, you know, wherever she may have landed. She had just gotten her pilot's license, and just gotten her first job as a pilot, and did not get a chance to fulfill that. So it was very, very intense event, and our mayor was there, gave a proclamation, there were some other leaders, Senator Sykes, State Representatives Goloski and Sykes, also there was City Ward Councilwoman Amovian and Russ Neal, and then it was Ginger, Ms. Baylor, I'm sorry, and I who were there as well to, to attend. So I just wanted to share that, and it's sad that, you know, we have such, such good talent here in Akron Public Schools, such good kids, and to lose one like that is kind of tough, and we tend to lose a little bit more, so we need to hopefully keep ourselves looking to the sky and looking to guide our young people in a positive manner. Thank you.
I will share just a couple of highlights too. The first, right before we went to the NSBA conference, I got a choose to go to the Hatton C L C Spring Program. I'm just going to pass this around. It was so cool. It is like a perfect example of getting our families and our communities inside our buildings, and the performances ranged from harp playing, and the singers will appreciate this, but they played bass and treble clef on a single harp, and then we heard rappers and beatboxers, and it was, I'm going to pass this around just so you can see the breadth of what we heard. And then they had a math carnival, and every kind of area in the school was a different section, so a ton, I think there was over 200 kids actually signed up to do the math carnival with their parents and community members, so a really good example. NSBA, I wanted to talk about a handful of sessions there real quick. One that I ended with actually was called The Happiness Advantage. If anybody has read that book, I read it from like a corporate environment perspective, and they talked about how it can actually be a critical component to social emotional learning, and sometimes the author loses focus on the word happiness, because it feels very fluffy, but it actually just means a positive emotional state, so that could be hope or inspiration, and it's about creating the happiness advantage essentially inside of classrooms. So it was, it was fascinating, and they, they also talk about our current formula, especially in like a business perspective, is you work hard, you succeed, and then you're happy. But to reverse that, when it's actually happiness, positive emotional states fuel productivity, and they fuel success, so how can you build that in to any environment that we're in, if it's business or if it's in schools? So I'll have to bring the book next time if anyone wants to read it. The book's fantastic, too. I also went to a session where they interviewed some award winners about the equity work that they were doing in their district, and I'll just do a handful of quick highlights from there. Des Moines, Iowa was one that won, and they actually created seven different equity teams across their district, and it was things like at the building level, and at the community level, they had tons of stakeholders, equity coaches teams, equity mentor teams, they actually had a black educators team that came together to talk about what their roles were, a really, really cool way to kind of think about spreading equity work throughout the district. And they also talked about how they started some of their work with cultural proficiency, and that that can be a really important piece of the equity pie that sometimes districts can forget about. And I know we're certainly not forgetting about that part, but it was interesting to hear that language more. And I'm going to pass around a couple other things. The Arts Education Field Guide, this was a very interesting session, too. It talked about arts education as, it sounds very similar to the co-curriculum thing, but we think a lot about our corporate partners, and this was helping districts think about arts-related partners and culture partners that you can bring into the district too, and painting a much bigger picture of what the arts and education could actually look like together. So I'll cut around to. And I also have a bunch of happiness, positive psychology stuff that I pass around as well. And the last, maybe a couple of things just to mention, the Project Grad, March Gradness, another fantastic event, they just do that, the last couple times I've, when it was fantastic. The State of the County Help, we heard a lot of sobering numbers, but I really appreciated what you said, Mr. James. There were some blips where it would say, like, you know, our substance abuse numbers have gone down pretty significantly in five years, but Mr. James's point was, there's still numbers, there's still our kids in substance abuse, so let's not get really excited when numbers dip, because we still have problems that we have to address and not to lose our focus in those areas. And the last thing, I'm bad at being brief tonight, apologize, I just wanted to mention the Goodyear and Cleveland Cavaliers STEM Grand Opening at Buckdole. Reverend Walker and I got a chance to go, and I think we talk a lot about these community partners bringing, you know, their talent and their time and all these mutual resources, but they also bring this core factor, like to step into that room with the Cleveland Cavs logo and the Goodyear logo, it's just one of those fairy dust things that we could not do on our own, so we're very, very appreciative of that partnership.
As you may know, my name is Chandler Forshy, I'm from Kenmore Garfield High School. I'm in the 10th grade. During the winter sports season, we had our girls' basketball team win the city series championship against Buckdole High School. Their team also made it all the way to states, and they made it to the second round of the playoff series. The girls' basketball coach, you know, Tommy Jones, earned not only the title of city coach of the year, but the Akron Beacon General Coach of the Year. On another sports note, for the Kenmore Garfield Wrestling Team, I won city champion in the 106 weight class and made it to fifth place in districts. Along with a lot of our great sports teams, and we have a lot of good career pathways at the high school, our best by far has got to be the culinary pathway. Our culinary pathway served lunch to 3,000 attendees to the Ohio State Thebesian Conference held at Firestone C L C. For lunch, they serve prepared box lunches with sandwiches, chips, cookies, drink. For dinner, they served 1,300 buffet-style dinners that include lemon peppered chicken, parsley, green beans, brownies, and a drink. Full dinner service was served to 200 people who had baked chicken, mashed potatoes, veggie melonade, and cheesecake. 25 juniors, seniors, and sophomores prepared the food under the instruction of Chef Skelly. This Thursday, five students and Chef Skelly from the culinary pathway will be preparing hot appetizers and desserts for 275 people attending the dedication of the new administration building at 10 North Broadway. The entire senior class in our advanced manufacturing pathway have passed the NIMs industry credential for machining, all are working in that field except for one student who is currently enrolled in the military. Mr. Thompson is the instructor of that course.
Okay, very nice, very nice. I want to go back and continue a little bit with the SHRM report that was at the NSBA conference, and the gentleman that was over the H R department, and how he said that we're a decade behind preparing our students, or the workforce of today and tomorrow. So that was significant. When I heard that, he was encouraging all of the school districts to please prepare the students properly for the workforce, and when people say that, I always think about us and our career academies, and the way that our, our concept of how we're preparing our kids to do something that's going to be productive when they leave our environment. That ties into a meeting that I went to, Canexus had a meeting, and they were, John Huston was there, and some of the other business, there was a lot of businesses represented there, and they kept breaking, we had like little breakout sessions where you talk about different issues and things of that nature. But at our table, and some of the initiatives that they had us speak around, there were a lot of barriers that people were having employing people for their businesses. So all this ties in with even the Lieutenant Governor, John Huston, he was saying that they're going to set aside special funding for people who are doing those very things. And I thought, wow, we're already doing all this stuff, you know? So I know we're getting some extra money. So, but you know, all that ties in with, you know, what we're doing and how we're empowering our students to move through our school system and become productive, prosperous citizens. So I just wanted to say that.
Well, I'm going to try to catch us up. So a big shout out to United Way, a lot of us went to their annual meeting, what a fantastic partner, keeping that brief. Summit D D Breakfast, always inspiring, fantastic people, get awards at that. Bruce Alexander, you deserve to be on any panel, don't ever think that you don't belong there.
Right.
I want to check into the Kennedy Honors, I really think that every year I watch someone get that award, and I think, oh, we need to apply for that, because we really do a fantastic bang-up job with our arts education. I love that you guys think about me when you, when you think arts, so thank you. I'm not going to go into any sessions I had in Philly, most of the people who I was in sessions, bless you for taking my emails and texts as I was asking you questions and throwing you ideas even while I was sitting there, but I just want to say how proud I am of this district as far as, we went in and all seven of us went, and that's really unusual for a board, especially of a city of our size, and I just want to say how incredibly proud I was that, I don't know that we were ever in the same session, maybe once, maybe twice if, if we were lucky. We communicated with each other, we broke it up, we, you know, if there were 50 sessions going on at once, we picked seven great ones, and we were there, and we showed up, and we represented, we gave positive feedback, we asked good questions. So I was just really proud of how, as a district, and we had Carla with us for a while, and she was there and getting some information too, so it was, it was definitely worthwhile for us to be there, and I just want to say I'm really proud to serve with all of you.
I mean, not only good for us to be there, but as you pointed out, with our student representatives to the board that we have, that came out of two years ago, are all of us attending the National School Boards Association Conference, and, and liked what some other districts were starting or were doing, and.
And turned it into our.
Turned it into our own version of that, sorry.
Very proud of what we already do.
That's true.
I'll take that.
We got it going on.
The top of it says, culture is contagious, and, you know, I saw that, and I think of partnership we have, you know, sitting here right now, and how the positive culture in our school system is contagious, and it just reminded me of a couple of different sessions I had at National School Board Association, but none of it was about creating trauma-sensitive schools, and it talked about not only trying to create a positive culture for the students, but also for the teachers, and, you know, asking what are we doing for the teachers? They gave examples of, you know, bowling nights for, you know, certain field administrators or principals, as we like to call them, doing, you know, bowling nights, just to create a culture and a, you know, inclusive atmosphere in the school building, because if the teacher's not comfortable at school and not happy going to their job every day, that, then you're just going to have that negativity, and that trickle down. So that was a very interesting session I was at, and in the same session, I thought it was very interesting, just the statistic, the one woman was talking about, she worked in a alternative program, and she decided to test those kids to see how they would score on being gifted, and 50% of the kids in that class, obviously it's anecdotal, but 50% of kids in her class tested as being gifted, and I sometimes wonder if. And I sometimes wonder if that giftedness gets bored in a typical classroom and that's why, you know, they act out or they just get bored at the school. But I thought that was very interesting. And another one I want to point out, I was in a session about what the security in schools look like today. And it wasn't just about shooter safety when you think of security, but whether a child feels secure and safe in the building where it's a creative atmosphere for them. And it was, you know, they talked about social emotional learning. It's an adult issue too, where you can have adults and, you know, somebody here just said, you know, if you had those aces when you were a kid, they're certainly going to spill over into your adult life. And I think it's something we are cognitive of and I, you know, I think in everything we do in life, we can always do better. And the other thing that was, that stuck out for me in that same session, they were talking about discipline. And when you go into a restorative type of practices from a discipline standpoint, how for some reason, certain stakeholders think you're being soft in discipline instead of, you know, instead of taking the word discipline and, you know, turning it to where we're trying to keep, teach the students to be self-disciplined, to keep them once again happy and engaged in the classroom. And that sort of dovetails into a press conference I went to today. I went to the City of Akron's press conference on youth violence prevention. And Jim Mullen was there and he spoke on what, you know, United Way is doing from that standpoint. And he dovetailed college and career academies and what we're doing at, going to be, starting to do at Helen Arnold and at Robinson in the very near future. And how those are sort of preventive measures to keep kids active, keep them occupied so they don't have those idle pans that go out. And I forget what the statement is, but yeah. There you go. And that's not kind of workshops you want to have in Akron Public Schools. But, you know, it dovetailed very well with, you know, Rock, Don Scoda was there, I think you had mentioned, and people went to the Summit County State of Health last week. I think that all dovetails and it's, and it's just showing what the community is doing and go back to that culture just in the city of Akron. Exciting stuff.
We did forget one thing. A couple of us went to, and we didn't mention the last board, we went down to the State Legislative Conference and it was really good. And it was good to hear that we had public officials who were at the state talking about education and they were all, seemed like they were all on the same page. It was really good that we were down there. Cup and Patterson was there, the Speaker of the House, Householder was there, and they all were talking about education. And so I'm still alive and I tell the rest, but it was just very good to hear them talking about education. They have someone that I take care of there too.
And the treasurer was a superstar there. Everyone knew him.
Thank you all very much for your comments and sharing. Quickly, Portland, Maine had a group of young people who were there at the National School Board Association. They were their student representatives. And I know we talked briefly about how we can introduce our students to meetings like that, either go to the Capitol Conference, go to Q meeting, or go to NSBA meeting. But that's something we'll be presenting, I'm sure at some point, to the treasurer and to Dreama and others, Mr. Whitfield, to see how that might be done and through the committee to enact that so we can do more. There are a lot of different variations on how students sit on these boards. And I think we've taken the best of what we've heard and put it here so we have a number of ideas that are being floated around, how we best can use our students to help us, to have a voice. So I want you to know, you do have a voice at the table. It's not just you sitting at the table, but to interact with us as board members because we want to do, we do want to hear from you and from your point of view. To highlight just briefly, the Cleveland Cavaliers and the Goodyear presentation at Buckdole. When, I hope every board member who was not able to be there because you were at the NSBA meeting and weren't able to attend, but you will just be all inspired by what has been done because of our partnership with the Cleveland Cavaliers and with Goodyear and that library that was turned into just a wonderful gift to our children in so many facets. So if you have a moment, step away, go by, look to see what's there. When we were leaving, they had basketballs and t-shirts. And so I asked that Joanne Isaac if she would secure a basketball and t-shirt for all of the board members and superintendent and treasurer. And they said the basketball was for the children and we could not have them. But what they did work out was a lovely gift bag for all of you. And it is a small basketball. But there's a t-shirt, a cap, and other items. And so we want to thank Joanne Isaac for following up on that. We had great representation, thank you, great representation from the Cavs. And Superintendent Staff, Ellen McWilliams-Woods did an excellent job. I got to sit up in the forefront to represent all of us. So we were right out front and sharing with our partners there. And they really appreciated, I'm sorry, Mrs. Isaac isn't here, because she was expressing how they really appreciated us being there and being at the table. So this is their gift to each of us for sharing in partnership with them. I don't think we have anyone to address the board this evening. And so at this time, we want to introduce a special guest that we have with us that will dovetail what you've already expressed, particularly those of you who went down to the Legislative Conference in Columbus and to see what Cup and Patterson were doing along with our treasurer and others. And so at this time, we'll turn it into the hands of Ryan Pinkleton, who will introduce our special guests, who will share with us the Ohio Fair School Funding Plan.
Thank you, President Walker. I'd like to introduce, before we get started, Superintendent Tom Hostler. Superintendent Hostler, friend and colleague I've got to spend a lot of time with over the past few, it's almost years at this point, almost two, if you think about it, it's been over a year and a half. Tom's been a superintendent in Ohio and another state we won't mention to our north for almost 20 years. But he's been superintendent at Perrysburg in Northwest Ohio near Toledo for 12. Super successful superintendent, very engaged in hearing how he interacts with students. He's the award winner of quite a few things. I'll shorten his bio for the sake of time, but Ohio Superintendent Outstanding Performance Award by the Martha Holden Jennings Foundation. He's received numerous accreditations from the Buckeye Association of School Administration, Superintendents Association, and serves on their executive board. He is the Chair for the Alliance for High Quality Education, members of various boards around town with YMCA and civic leadership. And he was awarded the exemplary leadership award by, also by BASSA. But more important, Tom is a friend of mine. He's a friend of education. And he and I've spent more than a year and a half together, at least a few days a month. And over the past month, really intensive scenario at the State House and with our two representatives. But it's really important that, and Tom, you'll hear from him about the relationship of eight superintendents and eight treasures who partnered with Cup and Patterson, a Republican and a Democrat, to solve school funding in Ohio, which is no easy task. So before Tom jumps up there, we do have an introduction from Representative Bob Cup, a Republican from London. Sorry for your interruption.
Over four bits, 82% of districts are either on a cap, which limits the funding they would get under the formula, or a guarantee which props up the funding they're not getting under the formula. So it's clearly now more a patch than a formula. Moreover, our school funding formula has not been tied to an objective analysis of what it really takes to educate students to succeed in our 21st century. And that has, of course, the effect of diminishing our future workforce as well as our economy. So the bipartisan school, bipartisan fair school funding plan is designed to get school funding right. And its guiding principles, which are very important to this effort, are that to have a system that is rational, understandable, and transparent, is based on the actual costs of education, that is designed to eliminate the artificial caps on the formula-driven increases, to reduce the number of districts on artificial guarantees, and to respect local control. So the plan will address Ohio's critical, students' critical needs, including providing basic instructional resources, at funds for poverty and mental health, help special needs gifted and English language learners, improve security and safety, and invest in career tech centers, STEM, science, technology, engineering of math skills, and in Ohio's educational service centers.
Well, thank you. It's an honor to be here and to be able to share a little bit about our work. I just wanted to take a moment to just, from Northwest Ohio, being able to share and convey what your staff is doing across the state, the respect that they garner as they do the work, not only here for Akron, but also for all the students in school districts in Ohio. There's a tremendous amount of respect and value into what is being said. So I don't have to tell you this, but I will remind you, and they didn't put me up to this, but from your superintendent, assistant superintendent, I know she couldn't be here today, just outstanding, dedicated individuals. And it's been a pleasure to work with them and we appreciate all of your leadership and your team's leadership allowing them to work in this capacity. Ryan, I don't have to say a whole lot about him. He's just a phenomenal person and I think that the care and dedication he has for all students, it really shines through with everything that he does. So I just wanted to take a moment to plug your staff and what they do. And I have a son that's a senior at Kent State. Akron's a place that I was vaguely familiar with four years ago. And now I'm very honored to be able to tell people exactly what I know about this district, which is really a great story, a great success story. So congratulations to all of you. So we talked about this process as we get into the conversation here and the three charges that we received. And you can read those here, but I think the important thing that we want to point out is Cup and Patterson, you have a Democratic Northeast Ohio State Representative and a West Ohio Republican State Representative who were sitting down saying, "We have to do something different. We cannot continue to have another generation of students go through this process." And this was during the budget, Biennium Budget Process the last time. They said, "We have to do something different." So in a time when we have perhaps some of the greatest political divides in our state and in our country, it says a lot about where this began, where you had a Democrat and Republican from opposite ends of the state saying, "Enough is enough. We need to do something different than what we've been doing before." And they set out kind of this mission to do that. So having Democrat and Republican work together across the aisle takes courage. For them to choose school funding as a thing they want to work together on, I think is crazy. I think there's a certain level of craziness there. So they reached out to eight different superintendents, eight different treasures from around the state, trying to get that cross-section and brought these folks together and said, "Let's do this." And so that's what we've been doing. So our work has really been focused very much on these components and trying to accomplish these things. And I think as we go through it, you'll see that we've had a great deal of success in accomplishing exactly what we set out to do. And this next slide, we talk about our critical values. And I think one of the things that has been different about this process, this is not the first time we've had this process where someone has wanted to take on state funding. Going back to the blue ribbon commissions from Governor Taft all the way back then and all the way through, there's been several attempts to kind of solve that riddle of school funding. And this has been a very different process. It's driven by the field. It's driven by, and you have a student sitting at the head of your table. I think that's very symbolic. And I think that focus is something that we've been very, very important for us to focus on. And no offense to treasures across the state, if they focus on numbers. And during this process, we wanted to focus on one number that was very important to us. And that number was 2031. And no, that's not the number to my ATM debit card, but 2031, right now, kindergartners today that are sitting in your classrooms, who are going home, who are looking forward to coming to school tomorrow, they're members of the class of 2031. And we intentionally, when you look at these kinds of things that we were asked to do to arrive at this destination, you will see that in being the thread that we wove through this entire process. 2031 is the most important number. And we're going to talk about millions of dollars and all those kinds of things. And treasures look at the bottom line, board members look at the bottom line. But we really focused on that one number. And I think that's been a huge difference for us as we've moved forward. And we owe it to ourselves to continue to keep that focus going.
So we were in the Ohio Supreme Court Building the day after the Parkland shooting for one of our meetings over this past year and a half. And that was the first day that we had some semblance of numbers. And Tom, actually it was one of our biggest attendance meetings. We had over 60 people because it was right across the street from the State House. We had representatives and lobbyists and aides. And Tom got the entire room to pick their head up a little bit and not focus on the bottom line. And that was a defining moment in our journey. So Tom was definitely at the center of that. This isn't a typo. I know the board's seen this slide, but currently there are 503 districts out of 610 that aren't on any formula in the state of Ohio. We have caps and guarantees and patchworks to the current formula. And quite literally, there are maybe two or three finance experts that could walk you through every line item in the school funding. And so I didn't bring those three pages. I know I've handed those out, but the school district funding formula is such a patchwork. We can't say what you're buying for $6,020. I can't tell you how many instructional units fund the classroom with those dollars. I can't tell you. The formula is so broken. There's two defining questions that we're trying to change the way in which we talk about education now. And that's what maybe our legislature and the school community has become, maybe it's too convenient to pass this along, is we've said, "What's a quality education and what is a cost?" And we've blended them into one thing. And so every Biennium, as to Cup and Patterson's credit, this is how much money we have left over at the end of the budget? We'll just put that towards education. Never once was there a discussion about quality. It's what we had left. And because you don't have a formula that defines what you buy, it's just that much easier to do so. We actually use Akron Public Schools as the example. Tom and I had a very humbling experience over the last few weeks to meet with all of our colleagues around the state of Ohio in three days. And that was after the simulation release. At no point in time did Akron Public Schools say, "Well, because Chromebooks are going to cost us a lot of money, we're not going to, we're not going to talk about the quality output." You said, "Well, we need to work with budgets and we need to prioritize and we need to reorganize and we need to make sure that that gets funded." And that's the reorganize, and we need to make sure that that gets funded, and that's the definition of quality," and then how you fund it. And so that pure part of the attempt, and Tom and I didn't see the statewide simulations, and I know this is getting a lot of attention around the state of Ohio and media in terms of the results, but this was a very pure attempt, that the two of us didn't see the simulations until the release of the simulations. So very quickly, we're going to talk about base cost, a little bit on add-ons, but then we're going to go into the results.
So we wanted to make sure that, that school funding is fair and, and getting it right. And so what we tried to do, as you can see here, these are some of the goals that we had when we set out to do this work. And these are all barriers to what we have experienced and the frustrations that we've experienced in the school communities across Ohio. And, and we know that these are things that have a way of dividing and sorting school districts. Because if you're a cap district and, and you're a guarantee district, you're looking at each other very differently. So what we wanted to do is really try to come up with a clear and transparent way to understand how to go about funding schools, and more importantly, what goes into a quality education for a student. And those are the critical issues that we wanted to do, and we'll take a step in terms of how we accomplish that with the base cost formula.
Okay, I hinted that out. I'll get the spreadsheet up if you have this in.
So, so we do have here, so we began with the charge of, "What does it take to, to educate a typical student and a typical school district? What are the elements that need to go into that educational experience?" And today, the cost, the, the dollars that are assigned to educate a student in Ohio, that base cost today is $6,020. What does that buy you? How did they arrive at that number, $6,020? And I don't think anybody can answer that question, which is a problem. So what we set out to do is begin through our process of asking some very important questions, and that is, "How do we define what that base cost should be? What are those critical elements in the 21st century that need to go into a student's educational experience?"
All right, so we want to talk just about the construction of the sheet. So the pie graph represents, at a very high level, that, as Tom mentioned, you don't know what $6,020 buys you. You truly don't know what it buys you. If anybody really wants to sit down with me and go through the formula, that's about 50 pages long, and they get to the end of the equation and says, "Well, it really doesn't tie back to anything. We can do that." But I think that proves the point when we sit with legislatures and they try to say, "Well, what line item can we influence technology with?" We just can't do that. The only way that we can impact the current formula is outside of it. So think about all those specific House bills that have been launched about social, emotional security needs, or about technology. That has to be done outside the formula. So 60% of this model is built directly tied to the classroom. Another 15% is instructional and student supports, 20% is school operations, and 5% is district leadership.
So we'll, we'll take you through a sample here of how we build these base costs. So the classroom, obviously, is the most important piece of, of any equation when it comes to educating students. So we used here as a sample, a district that has 768 students. So what we did is we looked at the number of students at each grade level. So if we pick out third grade, we have 52 students. So we began to, to have a great deal of conversation around research and best practices, looking at what we do in Ohio. And we began to see that, obviously, class sizes are an important component. The younger the students are, the more important it is to have a smaller class size. As students get older, class size becomes less significant in terms of the research. Now, if you're a teacher, would you like to have 20 students as 12th graders? Absolutely. But in terms of the research and what it shows, we understand that there is a difference between 12th grade class sizes and 20. So what we did is we looked at those and plugged in how, again, this is a funding model, it is not prescriptive. And what we've said in third grade, the ideal class size is 23 to 1. So in this ratio, what we do is we apply this ratio, and you can see the class sizes here, against the actual students. So this funding model would then generate funds for 2.3 teachers. And I've never seen a .3 teacher, but I do know that the funding level would come in at that level. Local school districts still wrestle with the idea of, "Do we hire two teachers to teach 52 and have 26 in a section?" Third grade is a pretty important year. Maybe we need to bring in three teachers, make those class sizes smaller. Those conversations happen today, and under this funding model, they'll happen tomorrow. So you can see how this works and how it's funded. We also, and what I loved about listening to your conversation as the meeting began, you talked about the arts, you talked about co-curriculars, you talked about all those kinds of things, and congratulations on being a 106 wrestling champion. So that's impressive. And you talked about all these kinds of things, and we said, "Those are very important to an educational experience. Those are lifelong lessons that people are taking with them as they go forward." And, and those are important to us, and they're certainly important to our students. And we need to make sure that we have the funds to support those. So as we began to, to get into this, you'll see these pull up here as, as things that we're recognizing, a dollar amount to continue to make, to, to say that these are important and need to be included. We also understand with part of those co-curriculars is, we need to have electives or specials, or in elementary school, we use the example here of art, music, and PE. So we do have a factor here in terms of funding that at the, at the elementary level. If you want to have more than three electives, that's local control. You can continue to do that. The state is funding, you know, would, would be, in this proposal, these three. We also understand that professional development is important in keeping our teachers current, keeping them fresh, keeping them plugged in. And sometimes you have to lead districts for those experiences. And Martha Holden Jennings provides great opportunities for teachers to go and to learn. So we also understand professional development is listed there and, and part of that, that base cost. And having substitute teachers be able to cover those classrooms when teachers go is important. And those are the real costs of what it takes. And as you get down through here, we also look at high school guidance to support, safety, security, non-personnel, social, emotional security, and life support. And this is something that we really began to talk about. In our district, suicide ideation is something that is really keeping us very much alarmed. And the special kind of resources that, that goes into handling students who are having those kinds of thoughts is, is very specialized. If we had these dollars available to us, we may be looking at bringing in somebody to focus on that. Our daydreaming district is, is in need of a social worker, and that's where they would be using it. So depending on your district and your needs, that is kind of open-ended in terms of what you would need to make a difference with your specific and unique students. And then in technology, this was something that actually began outside the base cost separate. And as we got into the conversation, we recognized to be effective today in the 21st century, technology is a must. And, and that is something that should be part of the base cost, which is what it is required for students. We looked at having a one-to-one environment, and, and that is essential to our students' success, not only in Ohio, but competing across the country. And that's reflected in, in, in our plan as well. So we looked at those key ingredients to, to what goes in, that quality education for students today.
If you look into instructional technology, the line item that's highlighted, as Tom mentioned, this is helping define what a typical, typical district and a typical student needs. You're, you're probably asking, as I look around our administrative team, they represent a lot of different departments, from gifted to special education to ESL to those things. So this is what's included in base cost. What does every student need as a foundation, and what does every district need today to operate? And that's what compute, computates the base cost or foundation that replaces the $6,020 that we don't know how to, to get there. The last two sections are building leadership and building operations. So think about how we staff the building for leadership, and then how we pay for the building in terms of utility costs. So when you see an amount per pupil there, that's actually taking our spending data from all around Ohio. We work with the Department of Education to pull that data. And you know, sometimes that section in red gets a bad name. It frames that 5% of the spending you get for a base cost is around district leadership and accountability, but when you really break down, it's much less than that for the leadership end. When you look at fiscal support, EMAS support, ITC, support, technology, and infrastructure, so Tom mentioned the one-to-one. This is, the recommendation in front of the legislature right now is so that every district in the state of Ohio and every building has high-speed internet and can connect in a one-to-one environment in every classroom. So that's the support. And so if you pull back to this slide, that's what summarizes our base cost and how it's All right, well, we'll move through add-ons pretty quickly before we get to distribution. So one of the biggest discussions for the group was poverty. And you see poverty, economically disadvantaged, you just see equity gaps, you see a lot of that being reported right now. And what was very humbling about that process is one of our partners, Claudia Zaler, from Waverly Schools in southeastern Ohio, actually, just due south. Poverty is much different around Ohio than what the current formula allows. It's so much different in a rural southeastern county than what it is in an urban center. While we have access to resources here, whereas a district that pulls from 150 square miles neighboring a district that's 150 square miles, neighboring another district that's this, they might have to go to an ESC to share one psychologist for 500 square miles. And on top of it, they can't find anyone. So we needed a, a program that was flexible enough in our poverty preschool and special education, to, to special education, one of the components was returning back to a weighted factor, so that we could truly identify, it's up to 30 to 45% of the cost of base cost. So on top of the 6,020, if that were the number, 30 to 45% is what the state and national research supports itself. Right now, it's between 11 and 18, depending on how you compute it. It doesn't go far enough to serve.
I think it's $262, and yet you ask the question, "Well, how did they come up with that number as the factor?" And there is not an answer. It's just a number.
To the second point, also aligned with the governor's budget, is that we recommend that every economically disadvantaged four-year-old has access to high-quality preschool. And then we talked about special education there. So you'll see these next four slides, you'll see the headings here, gifted ELL and transportation. These are all the subgroups that were outside of the base cost that we just worked. Every one of that superintendent, superintendent and treasurer partners worked together for over a year and a half on just that item, on a separate funding model on just that item. So funding of gifted based on a May 2018 study, that's been completed, I understand, and it's in the hands of our legislators. We need, we need a deep dive study about English language learners. It needs to be conducted, it needs to be a comprehensive study across all corners of the state. It's, it's vastly different across Ohio. And then modify, a lot of discussion around transportation, obviously, just took place in the governor's budget with the gasoline tax, but also, transportation has been cut. I think the average age of buses across the state of Ohio is north of 12 years, and really needs to be in the eight to 10-year range, and that needs to be a major investment.
And all of these are available on the website, the deep dive that Ryan talked about in terms of fuller explanations.
Open enrollment, community schools, and vouchers. This is a program where we fund all students who are educated. What does that mean? We're recommending that we direct fund charter schools. We can get into that if there's more questions later, but it seemed to be a lot of questions from our resident districts. It eliminates some of the anxiety between charter and community schools and the local about, as the treasurer for Akron Public Schools, I receive about $27 million for school choice options, and then I see it deducted. But it's also my job to reconcile that on behalf of the board and to track the students. So if the recommendation is to direct fund charter and community schools, that would no longer come into my books and be a deduct. And then open enrollment. Open enrollment, our two representative wanted to maintain open enrollment at its current dollar amounts. So we don't want to create any additional incentives or disincentives to change the way in which open enrollment was funded around the state of Ohio. There's a lot of capacity questions for districts. As you can imagine, us and some of our neighboring districts to the south, they're aware of that, right? We, we lose a number of students that head into buildings that have been full because of it, and that's not an area that we thought we needed to go at this point in time. Career tech, STEM, and educational service centers. On career tech, an input-based methodology, but also returning back to a weighted funds scenario, where it's a percentage-based. STEM's, it's funding direct, just like in the same manner as charter and community schools. And then ESCs, we needed to finish a study that's being conducted by the auditor of State's Office right now. All right, now to the results. You've heard me talk in presentations about the board that we don't take into account a community's ability to pay enough in our current formula. And Deroff has been synonymous with, quote-unquote, "an over-reliance on property tax." Actually, that's been reported upon lately around the state of Ohio. Deroff never said that. He never said it was an over-reliance on property tax. It said, it said that we needed to define what a quality education, equitable and adequate, and that what a per-pupil cost was. The school community, because it's lasted for so long, we've interpreted that as an over-reliance on property taxes. So our distribution methodology takes into account about a 40% income factor for a community's ability to pay. This is what it currently looks like, and there's no rhyme or reason. When you try to look into the details of this across the state, it's very difficult. So 60, 40, 60% based on property tax and 40% based on residents' ability to pay. Currently, 18% of the districts are funded on a formula. This is really to show kind of the nonsense of the school funding formula at its heart. And if you just want to zoom in on Whitehall and Campbell there, they both have a current per-pupil valuation of about $67,000. You take all the students in the district, you take all the property, and you divide the two, and that's your per-pupil allocation. But look at their payment from the state. One receives $12,500, the next one receives $7,100. This is truly a broken system. And when you only have 18% of the districts that can track down to a formula, and then you have a formula that's incomprehensible, this is very difficult. And people have just kind of come content with this process from the State House to the community. Nobody can explain it. So you just kind of say, "It's, well, it's just not fair and equitable," and then you just kind of move on.
And I think one of the challenges we face transitioning from that, what Ryan just shared, to where we are today, takes, it, it's taken us a couple decades to get to that place. And it's, and, and as we start to untangle that, it creates some unique challenges as we try to apply the new fair funding plan. So untangling that web that he just showed is, is a little bit tricky.
I'm going to go back to that slide and, and fall through. When Tom and I were out in front of our colleagues the last few weeks, we had to talk to the 85-plus percent of the districts that were on a formula, so that was a great win. We also had to talk about those districts that weren't gaining new money. And Tom said in front of a lot of our groups, he said, "Listen, I'm here to advocate for Akron Public Schools." Akron Public Schools. And I know you're going to advocate, advocate for me and Perrysburg schools, whether or not they're considered wealthy or not, because we've really misconstrued the determination of wealth across Ohio. Wealth in school districts is the amount of property you have. That's the wealth definition that we have today. And so there's a district in Ohio that gets $60 per pupil, and that's not fair either. We have a district in Ohio that gets $37,000 per pupil, and everything in between for 1 to 610. And it doesn't make sense. But part of our pledge, and I think part of the reason maybe we were paired together, a suburban, wealthier district, what you didn't read in Tom's bio has been on the ballot four or five times over the past few years. So we need to advocate for Perrysburg. You saw the, you saw the local paper talk about the percentage increase that districts got over one another. The percentage increase that was reported as a 30% increase, that district only gets like $450 a kid. That's not fair either. So we, we had to champion for all districts in the state of Ohio. Now here's the positives. The result statewide has been, and now this number's higher than that, it's over 85% with the formula that we believe get additional dollars and that are on a formula. Smaller districts tend to do better under this model because they don't have the economies of scale that we do. They benefit from a higher average teacher salary that's in the model, and then you saw on the handout the minimums and maximums. So they do better because we're giving them, or allowing funding to flow to them for social, emotional, and security need support where they might not have had the ability to do so before. And then districts heavily into the cap. So think of a guarantee as we're propping districts up that the formula doesn't work for, and where the state should really give them more money on a cap, we're just kind of keeping everybody in a tight range, and that's how we continue to budget. Now what's gotten a lot of attention recently are districts that are losing a high percentage of their enrollment for school choice options. And we need to go back to how this was released. We've talked about Tom and I seeing the simulations the same day as everybody else did, because we had the charge of defining what a quality education was. And our job was never to say how much it cost. That was never our job. But if we can prove it, and it's transparent and clean, then we can deliver something to the legislature that now we cannot ignore, right? We have to pay attention to what the quality definition is. And this was a difficult, this was a difficult call. And it's getting the attention out amongst the media and statewide that what was delivered from the Cupp Patterson School Funding approach was final. And what it was, was midstream. It was a release that has to go through the House adoption, both Republicans and Democrats, and be released and hopefully adopted, and then go through probably some Senate discussions in a conference committee after that. This was midstream. I'm, and you've heard from a lot of our urban colleagues. I am, after talking with Cupp and Patterson for the last two weeks straight about this, I am very confident that those course corrections will be made. Absolutely confident. And so I don't think we need to say at all that it didn't do what it needed to do for our urban brothers and sisters. It absolutely is flexible enough to do those things. I think you'll be pleasantly surprised when those results are out.
And I think that's really important for us as a collective group. So when we had the eight superintendents and eight treasurers that were together, you know, we learned a lot from each other and about each other. So it became very, very important to us as we worked through this, these challenges that we're getting it right. In the years it has taken us to get to where we are today, we understand it's not a flip of the switch, and then all of a sudden it's perfect. And you'll hear us talk about, we can't let perfect be the enemy of great. We pressed the button, we got 85% on track, and that was the first try. And so I think we're excited about that continued work. Going out and facing our colleagues after the release, you know, the simulations went out, Ryan and I probably on a monthly basis make people in our own communities upset with decisions we make. Here, we get a chance to go around the state, face people, and we were excited to be out there. We were excited to talk about the work we've done. We were excited to listen, and we were excited to keep working to try and get it right.
There were some feedback, they kind of stopped you in your tracks along the way. We had a district in southern Ohio in which, well, a member of the House said, this district's poor. Why are they not getting additional monies? And the treasurer who testified not but a little while later said, we don't need additional dollars. Can you imagine that? Treasurer for a school district in Ohio. Because they had been a part of this process, they knew why it was, how it was constructed, they said, we don't need additional dollars because we already get over $13,000 a student. My cash carryover is 20% and growing every year. I won't be on the ballot. Period. I don't need additional dollars. And it is so broken that educators and legislators alike don't know that. Another district example was a district that had received a pipeline. They got, and it's a small rural in southeastern Ohio, they got $100 million of new property value. They had a 30% cash carryover on their books, and they said, we don't need additional dollars. And one of their legislators that represent their area said, but this is a poor district, we need to give them more money. So our definition of poor and wealth isn't streamlined across the state of Ohio, nor is the mechanism of how we fund schools. When you have a district that's 30%, can you imagine that? 30% cash carryover and not on the ballot anytime probably in the next few decades. And so it was humbling to hear our colleagues start to say, this isn't right, and those of us on a guarantee, you know, those of us that are flat-funded, it's right. This is working. Just very quickly, and we'll get to wrap up, quintiles. This is taking all the 610 districts in the state of Ohio, dividing them by five. Lowest capacity means the lowest, the least ability to pay. And highest capacity, and these are the average per pupil dollars, so the formula's distributing the dollars in the right way. We just wanted to show you that we've done the research statewide.
Under the lowest capacity, there are 121 school districts in that category. 102 receive additional funds. And so one of the things that we did is we did a deep dive in terms of, well, why didn't those other districts receive those funds? And Ryan shared a couple of those examples of, well, based on, and that's what's great about the formula, is that it's transparent enough that you can very quickly get into it, look at it, understand it, and be able to talk to somebody without going into the, I don't know how many pages, explanation of how we fund schools today. So we've really dug into that. And again, we're still fine-tuning and tweaking those areas because there are a few anomalies that we have found fixing two binding budgets ago, something that got put in, you know, gap closing to bring up property values. Well, now when you're shifting to student, you know, counting students that are actually in your district, how do you factor in the loss of gap closing, which was there to prop up, you know, valuations in your community? So we're, we're working through those kinds of things.
I'm going to get to Rep. Patterson, and then turn it over to Tom to wrap us up. So Rep. Patterson, as Tom mentioned, is in the 99th district in Ohio, northeastern Ohio, Ashen Buell, a retired school teacher.
This is a legacy project for the Speaker, for the President, for the Governor, and for all the citizens of the state of Ohio. In years to come, and we must ask this question today, in years to come, what will they say about us on our watch? Did we do all that we could to ensure equality education for our students that is fair to them and fair to our taxpayers? The time is right. The need is urgent. The plan is ready. And we ask that you join us.
So I think just, and I think that's a great way to kind of close the conversation. It is kind of a call to arms because what is important to us is that this work that has been done, has been done by people who look out for all students in Ohio. At no time during this conversation did Ryan lean over, and I hope I don't get you into trouble, but at no time did he lean over and say, all right, we need to make sure when we do this base cost that we do it this way because I think it's going to benefit my district. And at no time did I lean over and say, hey, we're a fast-growing district, we, you know, we got a lot of young kids, let's bump this up. It really became something that we're focusing on, the big picture, 2031, that has really driven everything that we've been about and everything that we've been doing. In education, the conversation to try to do something different, to tackle this issue has stalled many, many times. We've talked about this as kind of like climbing the summit of the mountain. And we joke about it because when you look at, you know, Governor Taft's effort, Governor Strickland's effort, Governor Kasich's effort, every governor is the education governor, and we're going to fix this, they get stuck on that side of the mountain. And what we want to do is build upon the efforts and the attempts that they've made to reach that summit because we owe it. We can't let another generation of students come and go. We can't let another generation of board members serve and move on and say we couldn't do this. Deroff was an actual student who was a freshman in high school in 1991 when the lawsuits started. And he has children in school now.
He's 44.
44. So that is a reminder that we have a chance here. Is it perfect? The answer is no. But it gives us a framework to talk about it. So when Ryan, if this were to be implemented, and Ryan wants to talk about poverty, there is now a part of this formula, this framework, that you can point to and say, we need to improve, we need to increase the funding to this line right here. In our district, a fast-growing district, I can point to things in this framework to have this conversation. In education, we have this tendency to circle the wagons, and then we turn the guns and fire inward. And this formula has kept this us and them mentality. Because if you're, again, if you're, if you're an urban district and we're a suburban district, we're not supposed to, we're not supposed to get along. And you can see that this process and the conversation has shifted away from them and us, and has put the focus on what can we do for Ohio to move it forward collectively. So it's, it's been a great experience led by some very courageous people that are, you know, putting it out there. And I think we're at a point where we have this understanding that we have to take the step forward. Because if we don't, if we don't, what's next? It's not like there's another plan out there. We know what we're going to get if this doesn't go forward. And if there's something that we, we're not comfortable with, or something we don't like, do we shut this all down? Go home? Because I think it'll be another generation that'll come and go. And when we're talking about Deroff's grandkids, this is our moment, and I think the representative really said it well, so. But we're here to listen and to continue the dialogue, and that's really very important to us as well.
Thanks for bearing with us in the presentation. We'll turn it over to you guys for questions. I know we need to probably move on, but Tom, I really appreciate you driving over two hours to come to Akron, so we appreciate it.
Before we entertain any questions, we want to thank you for coming on behalf of the board.
Would you like the basketball? I know that was really important to you. I want to go home. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
Any questions or comments? Yes?
I just wanted to say first, just one slight correction. We have a treasurer that doesn't just focus on the numbers. It definitely is not one. I talked to Mr. Pendleton the other day, and I was talking about how, you know, there are some people who aren't waiting for this to be tweaked, and it reminded me what my grandmother used to talk about throwing the baby out with the bathwater, and that we need to give this a chance, that this is mid rollout. I love the fact that the local control part, and that's why I think our board and other boards across the state really need to get behind this. This isn't prescribing, you may have one nurse, you may have, or you can have a psychologist, or you can have a social worker. This is letting Akron be Akron. And that's one of the things that we are very, that we hold very dear here. We make choices for our students based on what's best for our students. I have one slight question. We talked briefly about school choice. So in a district like Akron where we are passed through for choice schools and many of them, do you have any idea how much time and therefore money is spent in our district taking care of stuff like that? Will that save you time and money? And then is that, does that also affect private schools? We talked about it being choice that kind of focused on.
So let me talk about choice in general. So it's fund who are educated. So an institution like a charter community school would receive funds directly from the state of Ohio. They would no longer pass through our books. It will definitely save us time, money, energy, efficiencies, those kind of things on one hand. On another, and Tim and I have talked about this quite in detail, because those monies come through us, I'm responsible for those children the first time they come into our books. So I will no longer be able to see where those students are and live and account for them. That is a little bit of a disadvantage. As you know, the past three years, our enrollment has been increasing mostly because of those choice students coming back, which is a testament to our district and our offering. So I want to give our board the biggest competitive advantage in attracting and retaining those students as possible. But the overall funding mechanism is much more efficient to direct fund, is much more efficient. It represents, and it was less than 20% of the education budget. It's about $1 billion, a little over $1 billion that is currently being petitioned to be separated out from the education budget. And it won't change our relationships to the non-publics, still have good and intimate relationships with them, especially with artillery services and those kind of things.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you guys too, because this former thing has been killing me since I've been on the board all these years, because I know no one could explain it. You can go to a lot of stakeholders and ask them, nobody can explain it. So thank you guys for doing it. And I want to thank Cupp and Patterson as well, because you don't have to cross the aisle, you know, which means they're showing that they're taking into consideration the kids, and making kids first, so I want to thank them as well. My question that I have is, I do like the local control, but I think we do a really good job of handling our finances, and having you, Ryan, here has been really good. We know what's happening, and we know our funds are being used well, and we're putting as much as we can in the classroom. The question, I had, the other school districts such as Youngstown or Lorraine, what is their thoughts on this here? Because I know they've taken a hit over these last few years, and I was wondering what their thoughts are from some of their representatives.
Yeah, the first release of the formula a couple Fridays ago when we got the simulations, about half the urban districts in Ohio that lose a large percentage of their students. It's taking that number of students and it's still dividing it by the property and their capacity, and it's skewing the formula a bit. And that's why when I said course correction, Cupp and Patterson heard that, we viewed, in fact, I know they met with representatives of Ohio, eight, one-on-one, to make those course corrections in the formula. So about half the urbans were on a guarantee, meaning they were in that small percentage of districts that were going to be receiving additional dollars. And that was tough. You know, Youngstown, Youngstown loses over 50% of their kids. And we have a district in Ohio with five kids, five kids, and we have a district in Ohio with over 50,000. It's the fifth most populous state in the nation, and we have 610 districts. And that's tough to have a formula that works for all of them. And so I think that the larger urban, metropolitan areas, they needed more attention. And I think they got that, and I saw some interactions from Cupp and Patterson back today, because within the next week, they have to deliver their budget. And they were course corrections, I think, that we received very well. And they were course corrections, I think, that we received very well.
And in Northwest Ohio, you know, I've been in contact with the board president from Toledo Public Schools, and, you know, just saying all the things that Ryan is saying about this, you know, we're focusing on this, we're trying to make it work for those districts because we understand the challenges that you face are very different than the challenges I face, and we know we need to give them all the tools that they need to be successful. And that's been important to us too in Northwest Ohio.
Thank you.
Anthony, the camera thing. Tim?
Sure. Well, just like to echo my appreciation and thanks for, you know, coming out and spending some time with us. I also echo a little bit of the concern just on the charters, especially because we do increasingly find them coming back and sometimes not in the same condition that they left us. And it would be nice to have some of that, but I also understand that there are some benefits to direct funding of charters as well. But in any event, you know, just something to keep in mind of. However the discussions progress, I guess we do worry about some of them falling into cracks and losing them and not knowing where they went to, where they are, and in what condition they may or may return to us. So just something to think about. And just overall, I think the presentation is really good, and I know that we got some over at our special board meeting, and I appreciate that, what you've gone through. I've been on the board for seven years now, a member of finance committee now in my fifth year. And it's been somewhat of a local embarrassment to not be able to go out and talk, you know, even locally, to be able to explain to anyone about how it's funded and as much for anybody that is in the audience that might be watching this board meeting at some point, if people do that. It's funny how at the special meeting, you gave us those three pages of funding formula, add this to Y, and go back to line 52. I mean, it reads worse than, you know, our taxes. And you say, you know, "Now we need to increase funding in technology." Tell me which line it is. And you would influence, and you look at these pages, and you just, you can't find it. I love, I love what you came up with. I love the presentation. I hope that people are listening around the state. I hope that people are listening locally. And to the extent that we can help be influencers and be more engaged in that process, I would encourage you to take advantage because we interact with many of the folks that will be voting on this, sometimes on a weekly, if not more regular basis. I mean, we bump into them all the time. It'd be nice to be putting that bug in their ears and singing the same song from the same level that you are, so.
We will follow up the board tomorrow, tonight, with all the talking points, certainly the hard, with all the community. Appreciate that.
Patrick sort of queued up my question. I have to imagine we're still going to be a pass-through for federal funds to the charters and vouchers, or does that disappear? That disappears as well?
Not through federal, yeah. Not through charters and vouchers.
Okay, so how would we be funded for transportation now? Not 20 grand anymore? We would be specifically funded for 16, but don't we have to know who those students are?
They would be funded on riders. So the, it's very, transportation form is pretty complex.
I figured I was going to get my weeds here. I don't want to go too far with weeds.
Just high level, it's been a formula that we've, in Ohio, have reduced and reduced and reduced, so it really doesn't work that much. The bus subsidy program went away to help districts afford buses, which you now know are 90,000 plus. But it just funds on ridership. So when we are responsible for delivering students to other institutions, we get funded for that ridership. But also part of our recommendation is asynchronous calendars, meaning, and I heard Deborah gasp over there, kind of fall down, because...
There's happiness.
As you may or may not know, but we tell the story around Ohio, we transport to more non-APS sites than we do our own. And when they don't have a similar schedule or bell schedule or calendar, that applies even additional burden on us. So part of our recommendation was they had to be, if they didn't have our calendar, they have to pay 100% of the cost.
So is state still requiring us to transport those students?
Yes. But we will be funded for every rider, and if they choose not to have our same calendar, then they have to pay 100% of the cost. We're currently, we bear 100% of the cost.
I have two questions, and also just to echo the thanks. I feel like we are very privileged as a board to get to hear this presentation that you're marking all around the state, and thank you so much for all this work. It's, as much as you're thinking about all of the kids in Ohio, it's also nice to know that Akron so well represented this part of that voice. So two quick questions. One, could you talk more specifically about what local control means? So if I look at a lineup for like instructional technology, we get to control what that means? Or do we get to control the whole blue tide piece and know that we are spending 15% in the blue tide?
So with the control piece, those are dollars that would be, that you'd be funded for those things. Now, if you choose to say, "We want, instead of Chromebooks for all students, maybe what we do is we pull those dollars and say, 5th grade to 9th grade, we're going to go with Mac Airs. They're more expensive machines, but they match our curriculum, you know, the direction we're going." That's your choice. So you can use those funds, and they may or may not cover, you know, the cost of that type of a machine, but it's up to you to decide. And you may have a district that would say, "We're not going to go one-to-one. We're going to stick to paper and pencil." That would leave some questions in the community, like, "Why aren't we going in that direction?" But ultimately, those boards would have that ability. So everything there, and we talked about social, emotional, we use an example. A district could say, you know, "We're going to use those funds for an SRO or something different." The add-ons or the categoricals, those are more prescriptive. So when we're talking about funding for special education, those are dollars that would have to go towards special education. You couldn't take those and put them into co-curriculars or something like that. So those kind of, what we call below the line today, those add-ons would be things that what we're hearing is those would be designated, so you can't take those dollars and, but everything above, if you want 20 to a class, you have that option to do that. If you want to offer, you know, seven different foreign languages in your community, you can do that. You still have the choice to do that. But this is just a baseline funding model that gives you a lot of flexibility with how you choose to use it.
And then as one other follow-up question, if you think about what this formula looks like in five years or 10 years or in 2031, I'm assuming the original formula worked at some point. So there were things that happened that caused it to go off the rails and suddenly 85% did not. Are there mechanisms in place, do you think, with this current model that would save us from that destiny of the first funding model?
Yeah, I think this formula is very transparent, very intuitive, reality-based, and it goes back to Tom's comment. If you want to influence the current formula, if you're a school board in Ohio and you want to influence the current formula through social, emotional, and security needs, how do you do it? You can. So because we're funding the classroom, and that part of it hasn't been done, and it's scalable in the sense that if you want to add more dollars in technology, it's very research-based, you can get right down to that level and more dollars can be driven. So...
I think the other thing too about this formula is that it is, it is based on, especially the distribution and those kinds of things, are based on what is happening in the boundaries of your school district. So today, I drove past a few cornfields in Northwest Ohio, or soon to be cornfields. If agricultural values fall in Northwest Ohio, under today's formula, Akron becomes a wealthier school district.
That's right.
And that's illogical. I don't understand how that happens, but that's our formula that we have today. What this does, and the slide that shows, it measures your property values in your school district and what's happening with the salaries or your federal taxes here in your community. And that will have to be looked at every few years and updated. But again, it's what's happening here, not this craziness across the state where we got less state aid because in Wood County, you know, agricultural values fell. And that's what we're living on today.
And I'm not sure if the formula ever worked, at least the Supreme Court said it never worked, by its ruling, at least three or four times, saying that Deroff, that funding for Ohio was unconstitutional. So now with Cupman-Patterson, our Akron team, the superintendents and other treasurers throughout Ohio coming together to present something that will move us off that dime. Again, it's not perfect, but it's flexible enough to be able to add on, to be able to meet our individual needs. So I think we are grateful, extremely grateful, that we are leading the charge, not at the end of the wagon, but leading what's going on. And so again, we thank you.
You guys are phenomenal for sticking a necks out here to take this on. With the add-ons, are the add-ons the only funding that is earmarked? Okay, so the other, other funding is fluid, is flexible? Okay, so just those, okay.
Thank you so very much for sharing with us, staying with us. This time, you all have the approval. Of record or meeting minutes and special meeting minutes, April 8th and March 5th, has been moved and properly seconded. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Uh, superintendent's recommendation?
Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 21 personnel recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval. And before a vote, I'd like Kathy McVada to introduce one appointment this evening.
Jessica, would you stand for me, please? Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to introduce to you Ms. Jessica Seitz. After graduating from Edison High School with honors in Richmond, Ohio, she won honor of her Bachelor of Science degree from Penn State University, and then later returned to college at University of Akron, which she is interested in science and secondary education. She joined Akron Public Schools in 2001 as a science teacher at Garfield High School. While at Garfield, she also assumed the role of coach of the girls volleyball team, as well as serving as an assistant cheerleading advisor. In addition to coaching, she served on numerous committees that served the school and the district. In 2007, she moved to the Akron Alternative Academy to teach science, and after three years there, she became a lead teacher. She was then promoted to a dean of students at Akron Alternative Academy in 2012. Jessica then moved on to Litchfield, where she, for four years, she served as the assistant principal. For this school year, she has served as the interim principal. And in light of the fantastic job that she's done here, tonight, we are recommending her for the principal position, beginning with the 2019 school year.
It was about a year ago now that I was here before you for the interim job, and I've had an amazing time. I've learned a lot. I've grown professionally. I can't thank enough these two wonderful colleagues next to me, our instructional coach, Jeanette Ntivio, and my IB coordinator, Sandy Klein, who have been just amazing in helping me make changes and transform some things at Litchfield. We've got more ideas, so I'm so excited to be able to continue what we've started, and I just thank you so much for this opportunity.
We need a motion at this time? Moved and properly seconded? Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 24 business affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
Moved and properly seconded? Any questions or comments? Not, hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
I did have a couple of questions. I was just bringing my desk over here.
Just, just really quickly, as we are approving item number 10, the change order, I just want to point out, and some of us got to tour again today, what a fantastic building that's shaping up to be. I think Ms. Mansfield even said it showed a lot of foresight on the part of our staff to think about, you know, just what the students and the staff that are going to be, and the parents, the community that's going to be coming into that building, you know, just how well done, it's all coming together. It's really beautiful. Also, a quick question on item number 14 on the AED units, and trust we had some students bring that to our attention. Wanted to point out, first of all, that we are replacing AED units around the district. Wanted to also find out if we had the opportunity to look at any of those places where we, you know, have we audited to ensure that, I guess, that we're placing them within the most ideal locations in the buildings that they're in, and if there are any places that we will be needing to place some additional AEDs as we move forward, or how's that looking?
Actually, each building has a certain number. Most of them are located in the most affluent areas, there's tend to be gyms, and near the main offices, and obviously the clinics. So those are the places that automatically either are having an active issue act, or you know automatically to go. We have been exploring other grants to see if we can do this additional units. Grant-wise, we have not been successful, but we'll keep looking at those for some further ideas as well.
And do we provide training, not just to the staff, but also to students or anyone else?
Actually, there is some training that is certainly done, but most of the brand-new units are almost self-explanatory. You take them off the ball, you open them up, and they give you very specific instructions. So it's more get to the unit as quickly as possible, and while I'm working on you, having Mrs. Baylor call 911, because you want somebody on the way from EMS as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call. Superintendent, do you report to those? No report. President, Treasury?
No report.
Our commission reports, legal contracts, and board policy committee, no report. Finance and capital management?
Yes, we do have a report. Finance committee met with the Ohio auditors of the state on March 25th for review of fiscal year 2018, with the following memo, who's present. Just to review, review the post office, let me slow down here. The finance committee reviewed the most recent financial audit. The district again received an unmodified opinion from the auditor state office. An unmodified opinion is the highest possible audit rating. It means the audit was free from major accounting procedural errors. And I don't think we've had a major account procedural error since I've been on the board, this being seven years. Some of the highlights from the past year include that more than $606 million were budgeted for fiscal year 18 comprised of the following funds. The general fund was $344 million. Grants were $37.5 million. Construction budget was just shy of $140 million, and then all other funding was just under $90 million. We also have 75 cash collection points throughout the district. Cash is not always the easiest thing to keep track of, but we do a very good job at that as well. Our payroll department processed 4,729 W-2s for employees for the calendar year 2018, and our accounts payable department paid more than $101 million worth of invoices, which include $39 million and over $8,000... which include $39 million in over 8,000 electronic fund transfers, over $55 million in check form, over 7,000 checks, and $6.8 million in credit card payments for over 3,000 transactions. So very proud of our fiscal officer, our CFO, as well as his staff and everybody who touches the money here in Akron School District. Very good job.
Wow, all that, and you're doing all that up in the mountain.
What it didn't say though was my staff attended the post audit. It was an excellent job. I was traveling, it was wonderful to have staff.
Oh, I guess it does. Ryan wasn't there.
His staff really did stuff.
They did a wonderful job.
They have done a great job.
And the conference.
I appreciate that.
Okay, instructional policy and student achievement.
Okay, we're talking about the math adoption. Okay, and the showcase math materials and things are on display out in the hallway there. So stop by if you haven't already and check it out. They did a lot of good work for us, the team, the adoption committee. So make sure that you take a look. After a thorough review of all publisher materials, the mathematics adoption committee achieved consensus on Pearson for grades K through 5 as the top recommendation. Pearson materials align to APS conceptual teaching and learning of mathematics, college and career academies, and the rural components of education.
So at our next board meeting, which is April 29th, there'll be a motion to adopt. The materials, as usual, are in the hallway until our next meeting. So we want to thank all of the teachers and staff who served on the adoption committee for their months of excellent work in reviewing potential materials and making a final recommendation. Check that out.
Thank you so very much for the committee reports. Unfinished business? Any new business? We do need to recess and to executive session. In pursuit to revise code 121.22, G1, G3, and G4, for the purpose of considering the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or student of the school district. And review negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees concerning compensation and other terms and conditions of employment. At this time, I need a motion. For a move?
I can't.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?